My name is Brent Howard. I'm the Law Director for the City of Tiffin. This evening, in addition to being a special meeting of City Council, it's a little unusual because we do not, Council does not have a person designated to start the meeting, lead the meeting, meaning that we do not have a President Pro Tem. So as a facilitator for the opening of the meeting, I will call the meeting to order. We will go through the invocation, pledge of allegiance, and roll call. And then immediately after that, I will ask if there are any, anyone from Council who would like to introduce a resolution, and I have a resolution in blank, to elect, appoint a President Pro Tem. And then Council will deal with that business. And if a resolution is, is approved for a President Pro Tem, then that person will receive, be administered the oath immediately thereafter, and then they will take over the gavel and run the rest of the meeting. So I appreciate everybody's cooperation with this, a little different start of a Tiffin City Council meeting. So with that, I will open and call the meeting to order. And this is a special meeting of Tiffin City Council at 6:00 PM on July 14, 2022. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Perry.
Please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. With thine as kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk now can take the roll call, please.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Leopard.
Here. There are five members of City Council present, so a quorum is, is present this evening. We'll immediately move to the election of a President Pro Tem of Council. I have a resolution in blank with, for the appointment of a President Pro Tem. It can be introduced by any member of Council. We can fill in then the person's name that you would like to, to include and appoint on the, as a part of the resolution. Is there anyone that would like to introduce a resolution appointing a member of Council as President Pro Tem? I will recognize Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Director of Law, Howard. I'll make a motion to include Councilmember Steve Leopard to that.
And what I will, I'll accept that as your introduction of a resolution to appoint Stephen Leopard as President Pro Tem.
Well said.
And if I could have you sign introducing and date it at the top.
I have a question before I get too far along. Can there be multiple names?
The procedure that Council has used always in the past is to have a resolution introduced, and then the Council votes on it. If, if the person or the resolution receives four votes, then it passes. So I would think that you would stay with your traditional method of the appointment of a President Pro Tem. And that's, that's fine. That's all you need right there.
Okay, sign it somewhere.
You, well, you put your name in the top, that's fine. So I have Resolution Number 22-21, introduced by Ken Jones. It's a resolution appointing Stephen Leopard President Pro Tem of Tiffin City Council for a term beginning July 14, 2022, and ending December 31, 2023. Is there a call for a, a motion for the adoption of Resolution Number 22-21?
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by, to approve Resolution 22-21 by Councilmember Perry. Is there a second to the motion? A second by Councilmember Yanatuno. Any discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Director of Law, Howard. I'd like to explain why I chose Steve Leopard, and it was a, going through a mind, a process of elimination. I haven't spoke with Councilmember Yanatuno recently, and if she's going to continue her quest to fill the mayor's position, then I think she should go that path. Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Wilkins, and myself are new or newer to the City Council, so that's how I came up with Steve Leopard.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, discussion regarding Resolution Number 22-21? Seeing none, ask the clerk to take the roll.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
The resolution passes five to zero. So now we will administer the oath to Councilmember Perry, or Councilmember Leopard.
I am not taking it.
President Pro Tem.
I, Stephen Leopard.
I, Stephen Leopard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Tiffin.
And the Charter of the City of Tiffin.
I will, in all respects.
I will, in all respects.
uphold and enforce.
uphold and enforce.
the general laws of the State of Ohio.
the general laws of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Tiffin.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Tiffin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
the duties of President Pro Tem.
the duties of President Pro Tem.
of the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, Ohio.
of the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, Ohio.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You've done that oath before, haven't you?
Yes, a few times.
This is weird.
Take the gavel.
Thank you, Director of Law, Howard. Clerk Forrest, would you please read the special meeting announcement?
Of course. This is a notice in compliance with Charter Section 3.09B to announce a special meeting of Tiffin City Council on Thursday, July 14, 2022, at 6:00 PM in Council chambers at City Hall. For consideration, to elect a new President Pro Tem for him, and to discuss how Council would like to proceed with fulfilling the vacancy of mayor, as well as any other business Council may consider.
Thank you, Clerk Forrest. Director of Law, Howard, do you have any special instruction on how Council should proceed with the election of a mayor? I have my own thoughts. Well, it is a council decision. You have had an established procedure, but under the facts and circumstances, it would be my suggestion that you have the ability to kind of rethink what is appropriate, given the circumstances that you're in. And what I mean by that is you had particular people that are, that were nominated by themselves to serve. You know, certain actions have taken place, so that now that you are, you only have two remaining, you could consider those two and move forward with a ballot to elect a mayor. You could revise the process in some way. You could open the process up. It's entirely up to City Council how you think, in the best interest of the community, how you would go about the process to elect a, a mayor. So, you know, I'm not giving you a lot of parameters, but that's really what the Charter says. So I'll give it back to you if there are any questions. I would suggest that you go through the agenda, and in particular, there are a couple of items that should be noted as part of the record, and that would be that there was a, a letter to Council from Zachary Perkins, that where he indicated that he would not be accepting the position of mayor. Then also, part of the record, I understand that you may have received other written communication from Bryce Riggs, who had previously self-nominated, and so that should be part of the record, so that anyone looking at the proceedings would understand maybe the further actions that Council would choose to take. Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll proceed with the agenda for this council meeting. There are no minutes?
Correct, Mr. President, no minutes.
Any committee reports from any Councilmember?
Not at this time, Mr. President.
Is there a reason for a committee of the whole meeting? Does anyone have reason for one? Okay, thank you. Reports to the officers. Her honor, acting Mayor Bridget Boyle.
No report, Mr. President.
Clerk of Council Anne Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Director of Finance is not in attendance. Director of Law Brent Howard.
No report, Mr. President.
Written communications.
There are no written communications this evening, Mr. President.
Clerk, I think the, the two items that I mentioned should be noted as part of written communications.
Okay. I do not have copies here with me. I could pull them up if you want. Some, do you want us to? Thank you. Okay. This is addressed to Tiffin City Council from Bryce Riggs, and it was received this morning, July 14. I am withdrawing my name from consideration for the appointment of the unexpired term of former Mayor Aaron D. Montz. I look forward to continuing in my role as the Executive Director of the Seneca Regional Chamber of Commerce and Destination, Seneca County. I will continue to work tirelessly to ensure that the Tiffin and Seneca County community is the best place to live, work, play, and visit. These developments this week have led me to believe it's in the best interest of our community to have a mayor that has intentions to only fulfill the unexpired term. This allows the voters the opportunity to choose their next mayor in November 2023 at the ballot box. The City of Tiffin is on the rise, and it will take all of us working together to keep the momentum moving forward. Respectfully, Bryce Riggs. And then the letter received from Zach Perkins, dated July 12. I am very saddened to announce I will not be accepting the office of mayor for the City of Tiffin, and I will also be resigning from Tiffin City Council effective immediately. This should be a great day of celebration for my family and myself, yet it has been filled with enormous amounts of negativity and backlash. I never joined Council with any intention other than to help the city succeed. The same intentions were true when I put my name in to be the next mayor. Respectfully, Zach Perkins.
Thank you. Oral communications. Anyone wishing to address City Council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct your comments to myself. Seeing none? Are there any motions? Resolutions and ordinances?
There are none tonight, Mr. President.
Other business? Okay, Councilmembers, we need to discuss on how to proceed to elect a mayor. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director of Law just spoke, and we do have two good candidates to decide on if we choose that route, route, whichever pronunciation is. And we need the best candidate, or the best person to lead Tiffin for the next 18 months. Even though these two candidates are very sound and capable, there may be someone out there that we're unaware of. So I would suggest we pick a deadline, submit cover letters, resumes, and go that direction.
Councilman Perkins, or Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would agree with Mr. Jones. I, maybe there's, you know, this past week has gotten somebody interested in politics that hasn't noticed it before. Maybe there is, and I do think we have two great candidates that very well might take that seat, but I think we do open it up to give the community a chance to put, you know, maybe they thought they didn't have a chance against, you know, such a crowded pool as they heard people were announcing their names for mayor. It would be my recommendation that we open it back up for the public until maybe Saturday, Sunday, and then, you know, that way we can review the list of candidates next Monday and vote on a mayor late next week would be my preference.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I meant to add an item, and I know you'll try to run me out of the room for this, but I would suggest, and I know we only have roughly 18 days to make this decision, but another Councilmember, myself, discussed that we thought that two question and answer periods was not enough. I would suggest we have at least discussed, maybe have in three, and we met on July 1st, we met on July 11th, we voted. We didn't get it right that time. I'm just hoping somehow we get it right the second time. So I would like some other people's opinions on three meetings or four.
My thought process is, we've been through this once. We invited the public to apply. We had four persons that made application. We interviewed four persons. We dropped one in the first round of voting. Two people have recused themselves from, from running for the mayor's office. That leaves us with one candidate, and I think that candidate should be elected as mayor. I don't think we need to open this up to further public input, well, I shouldn't say public input, but open this back up for application and interviews. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was listening, but would you, understood you'd say there's only one candidate less, left?
Correct.
I thought Mr. Cole and Councilmember Yanatuno were still on the list.
Mr. Cole was eliminated in the first round of voting at the last meeting. And Councilman Perkins and Mr. Cole have recused themselves. Mr. Riggs.
Thank you for that clarification.
I'm sorry. Mr. Riggs and Councilman Perkins have, had recused themselves. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've brought up about rushing things through and speeding, and you're correct, Mr. President. Nominating Councilmember Yanatuno and electing her tonight, if we can get four votes, would be the simple, fast way to do it. I just don't want to be accused of being part of, and I keep saying rushing this item through. I don't know what it would hurt if we waited 18 days, see who's interested in the registered voter here in the City of Tiffin, and there may not be any, so. And if there's six or eight or 10, so be it.
Law Director. Just note, one of your comments about possibly voting this evening on the election. Your notice is specifically to elect a new President Pro Tem and to discuss how Council would like to proceed. I think it may be inappropriate under your notice, even though you are allowed to consider other business, but I think the expectation of the public was to hear a discussion and have you make a determination on how you proceed, not to actually conduct a vote. So I would urge you not to vote this evening. You should establish the procedure, and then whatever that procedure is, then that might determine the date that you would vote, which could be as early, I suppose, as your next general, a regular meeting, which is Monday, or some other date.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
Councilman Perry.
Thank you. I think at the end of the day, we have to do what's best for Tiffin. I think what's best for Tiffin is finding the best candidate, and it very well might be, you know, Don or Mr. Cole here. But I think opening it back up gives the public a chance, you know, like, like I said before, a chance to put their hat in the ring when they maybe thought they didn't have a chance, or got somebody motivated, you know, in the recent events to get into this, into this field. So that still would be my, I, I don't see any loss going that way, because I would still hope these candidates are still in the pool and very well be considered, but I feel like that is the best way to go.
I guess I'd just like.
Woman Wilkins.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I would just like to discuss timeline, then. You said, you know, resumes by Sunday, you know, I, I think we really need to, to look this out. What's the day that we have to have an official answer? Is it August 4? I mean, so, and Mr. Jones is saying, you know, you want to have two, three interviews. I mean, we really have to look at a calendar and, and figure out this, if this is the route that we want to go.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I really don't know if I should be commenting, but as I listen to the discussion, Mr. Cole and I followed the directions and applied and followed the procedures, and we've already been through the question and answer period. And so in some ways, it's not really fair to put us back through that again, just because somebody might decide, oh, well, maybe I will try to go for it now. We, we entered into this wanting to do the job, and we followed the rules and the procedures, and it, it just doesn't seem fair to go back through this again.
Councilwoman Wilkins.
I would have to say I agree with you on that. I mean, you're going to have to go through three more interviews then, when you already went through interviews, so I agree with you.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Getting confused here. I heard one person say that Mr. Cole is no longer a candidate. That leaves one candidate. And based on the current events of the last week or so, there may be a very good candidate out there saying, let me get in here, let me be mayor, let me lead the City of Tiffin. So I just feel uncomfortable. One person, one person only.
Councilman Perry.
Thank you. The process was started and was completed when we selected a mayor. So now I believe it's up to us. Obviously, none of us want to, but we have to start a new process, I think, and I think we owe it to Tiffin to open it back up. I, I get, it's very frustrating to have to go through more interviews, and I do feel for you, Don, and I, I, I mean, I get the frustration, but I really feel like it's important to open it back up to the city.
Councilwoman Wilkins.
Could you, can we discuss a timeline, then, if that is the route that you'd like to go through the weekend, or accepting, you know, resumes and then review? I guess, what do you have in mind?
Councilman Perry?
Yeah. Like I said, I know we're on a tight timeline, and I know we're going to be pushing people a little bit with, you know, trying to get a resume and, and cover letters, you know, throughout the weekend. But in my mind, I would hope to have all the resumes, you know, by Saturday at some point, Sunday, you know, so I can sit down and review them. Obviously, I've been over, you know, two of them extensively, but if we do receive any others, then, you know, it gives me time Sunday to actually do some homework into this, and then Monday to, you know, consider our options, and then to vote, you know, for a mayor next week. I don't think we need three meetings, like Mr. Jones said, you know, like Don said, too. She's already been through this, you know, two, three times, but it's also deeper than that. It's about doing what's best for Tiffin and, and trying to find the best possible person we can find.
One thing, our second round of, of the interview process, I thought was very, very good. I felt like we became, we came to know the candidates much, much better, you know, it was a much more comfortable and relaxed situation. And so I, I think two rounds would be sufficient. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Boyle went down the timeline several works, weeks ago, and I was impressed with her organizational skills, if you will, so I'm going to learn from that. I'm going to suggest we have the candidates, whoever they are, submit their cover letter resumes by Monday, the 18th. Councilmember Wilkins wanted the timeline. Here it is, by Monday, the 18th. Have a first round of interviews, questions, and answers on Wednesday, July 20th. Second round, Wednesday, July 27th. Second round, Wednesday, July 27th. Third round, Wednesday, August the 3rd, and vote on a new mayor for, it's going to be 17 months by the time we get there. There's a timeline. Open for discussion, I would presume.
Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like that timeline's too drawn out. I feel like with everything that's gone on, I feel like, you know, maybe getting somebody elected a mayor, you know, sooner is going to be better for us. Not saying I want to rush anything, but I do want to move this along. I don't want to go up to the day before to then maybe, for whatever reason, you know, one of the council members can't show up, they get sick, whatever. I do not want to make it that close to the deadline. I think two rounds of answers and questioning is sufficient with a vote after the second round is, would be my vote.
Director Law.
Yeah, just some information, too, that you may want to factor into any timeline, is that you have two vacancies on council, and both of those are filled by partisan central committees, and they need to be filled within 30 days. I don't know for sure the timeline for each central committee, but you may have in your timeline before the 4th of August, there could be a vacancy filled by one of the committees. They could be then sworn in and would be eligible to vote, and you have to decide, is that appropriate, given that they were not involved in any of the process and may not be until sometime in the future, here in the next few weeks? I do understand Republican Central Committee may have a meeting scheduled for August the 1st to select a, fill the vacancy. I don't know if the Democratic Central Committee has scheduled a meeting yet. So I think you need to understand that process that they're going through and how that may impact who is eligible to vote, and whether that's appropriate or not.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very good point, Director Law. I was too hung up on my organizational skills and coming up with a timeline to satisfy Councilmember Wilkins. And it'd be nice if we had seven of us to vote on the next mayor and not just five of us. So with that.
There's no guarantee you will have that.
Well, if Republican Central Committee's meeting on August 1st, someone ought to get a hold of them and say, we need a candidate before August 1st. I'll be glad to do that. Can't tell them what to do, but I think we need seven people, not just five. I overlooked that.
I'm sorry.
Director Law.
Yeah, I, again, I don't know exactly the procedure that they need to follow, but I believe that the Republican Central Committee has certain requirements in their organizational documents of notice, and I believe maybe the first is when they can, that's the earliest that they can hold a meeting to select a person to fill the vacancy. From what I understand in talking to Mr. Klein this afternoon, who had some questions for me, so that could be the earliest, I believe, that they could fill the vacancy, and the Democratic Central Committee may have similar notice requirements and could put it off even further. And again, those people will not have participated in any of the Q and A that you're talking about, but then would be coming in possibly, if you have the timeline that you suggested, they would come in to vote and may not fully participate in the prior proceedings. And again, you have to consider, is that appropriate or not?
Councilman Perry.
I know, I read, I think yesterday, that they have to give a 10-day notice in the paper for the Republican Party to, before they can nominate a candidate, so I know they'll be on a time, you know, restraint as well. So I think that's something else we have to factor in. Going back to the process, you know, I would love to get somebody in there before that August 4th to get them in, you know, I won't say training, or get them in knowing the office before their start date of August 4th, you know, try to get as much knowledge from, you know, the active mayor as they can before she resumes her, you know, back to her real job, and as well as former mayor months. So I would, I don't want to rush a timeline, but I don't want to be so, you know, draw it out three weeks either. I don't think that's good for the public.
Councilwoman Yana Toono.
What happens if no one applies?
What are your, what are your thoughts now, if no one applies? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's a good question. I didn't think of that. May I ask you a question, what's my thoughts on that? We will know that on Monday, the 18th, if we go with a certain timeline.
Councilman Perry.
Let's make the new president pro tem do it.
Pardon?
We'll make the new president pro tem do it. My thought is, I would like to know the list before we go into our meeting. That way, the, when we go into Monday's meeting, we can have the candidates there for the first round is, would be my, my hope.
Okay, if we go that route, does Mr. Cole need to resubmit a resume and a cover letter? Because essentially, he was knocked out in the first round of voting.
That's something we still have on file, I'm assuming. I would say, if those candidates wish to keep their name in the hat, I wouldn't say no, but, I mean, obviously, I'll go with the group. I would consider them to, if they wish to re-enter, I mean, Dawn might say she doesn't want to go through it again, you know, I hope she does, but, but maybe it is just making sure that they do want to keep their name in the hat is, you know, a smart thing.
Any further comment? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe I wasn't following your question, but if we go the suggested route of resumes and covers letters by Monday, the 18th, I would anticipate Councilmember Yana Toono to resubmit her cover letter, resume, along with other registered voters in the city of Tiffin.
I don't think she needs to resubmit. She's still an active candidate. Or it is my understanding that Mr. Cole is not an active candidate because he lost in the first round of voting. Councilman Perry.
The only thing I will say to that is, maybe somebody that voted for Mr. Riggs, say, or Mr. Perkins, might have voted for Mr. Cole over Dawn, you know, so I think it's fair to bring Mr. Cole back into the race, as well as anyone else that would wish to resubmit.
Councilwoman Wilkins.
Is there any reason, you had pointed this is a new process, is there any reason why they just can't resubmit? And that's kind of like saying, yes, I want to do this again, like, let's, I mean, we're not asking them to do any more work other than resubmitting and saying, yes, I want to be considered again. I don't think it's maybe more of a formality, each person in this next round submits a resume and a cover letter, and these are the people that we're going to read this weekend and discuss on the 18th.
I would agree. I mean, I guess I did say, you know, we're starting a new process over, so let's just keep it, you know, that way, there's no confusion, and we know exactly who's going to be submitting and entering to be mayor.
Well, my thought process is if, even prior to this last week's activity, the entire voting public had a right to submit, and they chose not to. And now we're going to say, hey, we lost, we lost three people out of the, out of the candidates, and now we're going to go out and look for more? I don't think, I don't think that's necessary. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's necessary, because I don't want to be accused of not getting the best candidate in the registered voters of Tiffin, Ohio, to be the next mayor for 17 months. I think we need to open the pool back up.
And Councilman Jones.
Thank you. And I will, if it'll help the other four members, I will suggest we have two rounds of questions and answers and not the third one, that you seem not to like, if that helps.
And do you have a timeline?
Monday, the, address me.
Please.
Monday, the 18th, for resumes and cover letters.
4:30 PM, cut off?
Thank you, sir. That sounds like a good timeframe.
Can we possibly make it Sunday? I think it's important to, I would love to interview the first candidates Monday, and I think giving us time to look over resumes and be able to ask questions on Monday night would be important. I don't want to get the resume and then have them come and, you know, be rushed that way, either.
I mean, I mean, August 4th.
This needs to be put into a motion. Councilman Perry.
I would like to make a motion that the process is, we would require resumes and cover letters by 4:30 on Sunday, the, what is it?
17th.
17th. With those candidates coming to that next meeting for the first round of questions on the 18th, and then if council would so care to have a special meeting later next week, maybe a week from today, for the second round and the vote of our new mayor.
Yes, could I ask that all nominations be submitted via email? I believe there's a few of the administration out tomorrow, and I just want to ensure that we receive all resumes and cover letters, so if those can all be submitted via email.
That's a good point. And they will be submitted to Clerk of Council.
Clerk of Council, yeah, Clerk of Council, thank you.
Councilwoman Wilkins.
Clarification, if we don't receive any resumes over the weekend, is, are we, is Brian Cole still in the running for mayor, or are we just discussing Councilmember Yana Toono at that point?
Councilman Perry.
It's my understanding, we're starting a new process, so if Mr. Cole so chooses, he can resubmit his cover letter and resume, as well as Dawn, and anyone else within the community, to give them a chance.
Councilman Jones.
I know you're probably looking for a second, but somehow, we're in discussion mode here. Mayor Boyle makes a good point, email all cover letters and resumes. There may be a very good candidate out here in the city of Tiffin that does not have internet access, is not computer savvy. I'm close to that myself, and so we'd not want to eliminate someone just because they can't type 54 words a minute like I can.
Councilman Perry.
If somebody can't use email, I don't know how good of a mayor they're going to make not trying to be mean or anything like that, but it's, I think it's one of the qualifications that should go along with the job. So I think it's very reasonable to ask them to submit by, via email.
Motion.
I think, I think there's a motion made.
I did make a motion.
With all those details.
Waiting for a second.
Wait for a second, call for a second.
Point of order, Mr. President. How did we get in discussion mode before we had a second?
Just got out of order.
Sir?
Just got out of order.
No, I don't want to make a second.
No second, the motion dies. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. When I suggested the, and I'm not going to arm wrestle Councilmember Perry over one day, whether it's Sunday, the 17th, or Monday, the 18th, I might lose that arm wrestling. So Sunday, the 17th, electronically, I can go with that. I'm hoping you'll let me win one of these suggestions I have. Doesn't look good, though. Moving on, Monday, the 18th, when I said that, that's our next city council meeting, I did not expect to interview anyone during our council meeting on the 18th. That was never in my mind. That's why I came up with Wednesday, the 20th. A week later was Wednesday, the 27th. If we go with Wednesday, the 20th, Wednesday, the 22nd, if Councilmember Perry made a good point, if we don't have five members on Wednesday, the 27th, that still gives us 28, 29, 30, we can go all the way up to August 4th, so. I think resumes submitted by Sunday, the 17th, electronically. Interviews, 20th of, Wednesday, the 20th of July. Second round, Wednesday, the 27th of July, and vote at that time. Make a motion, right? Maybe I did, but I would make a motion that.
Sorry.
Hang on, Councilman Jones. Councilwoman Wilkins.
I will not be in Tiffin, Ohio on July 27th. Sorry.
When will you be in Ohio?
I will be out of Tiffin, the 26th through the 29th.
While I do want to open this back up to the public, I do feel it's very unfair to draw this out for Councilwoman Yana Toono and Mr. Cole. I feel very strongly we need to move swiftly with this, so even if it means an extra meeting, even, you know, within next week, I'm fine with that. Maybe instead of, you know, maybe we can collect resumes by, you know, by Monday or whatever, we meet that following Thursday, and maybe, you know, that following Monday, we vote, or something like that. I don't want to, I don't want to push it off that long. My, I'd still go back to my original motion of, you know, obviously, nobody seconded it, so I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think we do need to move more swiftly than what Councilman Jones is suggesting.
Councilwoman Wilkins.
I wasn't a part of the original setting up of the timeline. Are we looking for somebody that, you know, Councilmember Yana Toono said that she only wanted to fill the unexpired, or the, the term. Are we looking for somebody to then that wants to move on? I don't know how the discussions went prior to this. Are we looking for someone to just steady the ship for the next 18 months, or are we looking for somebody that, yes?
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're looking for someone to steady the ship for the next 17 months. That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, just the clarification, the charter gives you the ability to, and the authorization to elect just to fill the unexpired term, you know, regardless, you can have your own thinking about whether you want someone who is committed just for that period of time or longer, but the charter just says that your, your only authority is, is to fill it for the unexpired term.
Okay, thank you.
Next year, the voters will decide who continues with the next four-year term.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a specific question for Councilmember Wilkins. Would you be available on Monday, the 25th?
Yes.
And I'm ready to make another motion unless my other motion is still on the table. I'm not losing track where we're at here.
Please update us with correct dates.
Thank you. I would make a motion that we ask the voting residents of Tiffin to submit cover letters and resumes to fill the open mayor seat for the next 17, 18 months, and have them here by Sunday, the 17th, by 4:30. First round of interviews would be Thursday, the 21st of July. Second round of interviews would be Monday, the 25th, and vote at that time for a mayor.
Times, start times. For your special meetings.
I'll defer that to Councilman, Councilmember Perry, so we can get this thing done.
Well, it's your motion, though, I would suggest that you include all pertinent items in your motion.
Sir, I'm.
Include the times in your motion.
I did include 4:30, Sunday, the 17th, and meeting at 6 o'clock. And meeting at 6 o'clock on Thursday, the 21st, so I can get my dinner in. And 6:00 PM on Monday, the 25th.
Well, my day I can't is this, is 7/21, I'm in Florida.
July 21st will not be a good date.
For whom, or for?
Yeah.
For the mayor.
Apologies, I am out of town that day, and.
We would love to have the mayor there, but five of us are doing the interviews.
Yeah, it's, it's up to you guys if you.
And five of us are making this vote. And unless the mayor has a
I don't.
Participation in this, which I wouldn't think she would. Correct me if I'm wrong, I've been wrong before.
I think it's, I think it's important for us to give the mayor the opportunity to ask questions as well. She has more insight to this, this position than any of us do. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I reconsidered here. We wrap this around one council member's schedule. I guess we can wrap it around the mayor's schedule, so.
Apologies. Bump up to the 20th?
What was that comment? No, I'm sorry.
I said we just have to bump one way or the other.
Okay.
Sorry. So I'm out of town, I'll just give you the dates. I'm out of town the 20th through the 24th. I will be back the 25th. So if it's the 19th or after the 24th, I am available. I'll make myself available.
Tuesday, the 19th?
Yes, Tuesday, the, we're amending the motion before we get to motion on there, Tuesday, the 19th. 6:00 PM for the first round of interviews. And Monday, the 25th, at 6:00 PM for the second round of interviews, and cast our votes. That's my motion.
Councilman Perry.
I'll second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we open up the mayoralship, the mayor's position, to the public again. Cover letters and resumes need to be submitted by Sunday, the 17th, at 4:30 PM to the Clerk of City Council. And we'll announce the, we'll announce the dates when we announce a special meeting. Is that fair with everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
But we have a motion.
Director of Law.
Those dates are a part of the motion, right?
Okay. The Tuesday, the 19th, at 6:00 PM will be a special meeting of City Council, along with is that Monday, the 25th?
Yes.
Correct.
Monday, the July 25th, at 6:00 PM. At that time, we will interview on the 20th, on the 19th and the 25th. And we will vote for, for the mayor's position on the 25th. Is there any further discussion? Dot, will you call the roll? Clerk Forrest.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
No.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
No. Motion fails by a vote of
Three to two.
Three to two. Four is required for passage. Further discussion, Councilman Jones.
Well, I'm ready to make another motion. We can discuss it all night long if you like. Discuss it. I'd be glad to move Tuesday to Monday, the 18th.
I don't think it's a date issue, as far as date or time. It's an issue of whether we open, open nominations up to, self-nominations up to the electorate as, again.
Okay, thank you. And I've said it four times. I might have said it five, I'll say it six. I think we need to continue discussing, opening this up to the residents of voting members of Tiffin to get the best candidate to steer the city for the next 17, 18 months. I'm going to stick to that.
They had the opportunity, and we had four, four candidates apply. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Things changed with a capital C in the last seven to 10 days. And I think we should take that into consideration.
Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Leopard. I, again, I think things do change. People might have not thrown their name in the hat because they saw certain people go for the seat. And I think we owe it to the city to reopen this back up. I think it's, you know, we're elected to find the absolute best person. It doesn't do us any harm to open it back up. I get there's a process. That process started and it ended. And it's time that we reopen it back up and find the best person to lead the city for the next 18 months.
The public didn't know who nominated themselves.
It, they did on, you know, via Facebook.
They did, they did after, after the fact. That when the cutoff, after the fact of the cutoff time, is they, was when they knew who the candidates were. If they were scared to submit a resume and a cover letter because Mr. or Mrs. X was in the running, you know, too bad, you know? They had their opportunity. Councilman Perry.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I don't know if scared is the right word, but I, maybe this has rejuvenated somebody to get into this role that would be great for it. Again, what, what, what do we lose by doing it? I would hope that both these candidates both come back and, you know, rejoin the, the race. And I hope, you know, maybe there's 10 people. I hope we find the best one. Like I said, we're, we're, we're voted in to elect the best possible candidate with the knowledge that we know. So I don't, I don't see what we can, what we lose by, by reopening it back up.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I know Councilmember Yanatuno voted no. She did not like my motion. I don't think she has too much to worry about. She's, if she thinks she's the best candidate, whether there's two more, or eight more, or 10 more, if she's the best candidate, she's going to come out on top. And when I say she thinks she's the best candidate, when I was going door to door in 2019, people asked me, who's your competition? I looked them right in the eye. I said, I have no competition. I'm the best candidate. So I still think we should open it up, whether it's her and eight more, or her and one more, or just her.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I am the principle of the thing girl. And a lawyer friend of mine said that it's people like me that add houses to their additions because it's a losing battle. But to me, it's the principle of the thing. I did my due diligence. I came forward and opened myself up. And it's starting to get a little insulting, thinking that you guys don't think I'm the, the best candidate. And I, maybe I shouldn't feel that way, but it's starting to feel that way. I did my job. I've done my job these whole six years on council. I am highly informed on what's going on. I've had background with a public entity for 18 years. I'm not sure what more you want from me or another candidate. And so, like I said, it's the principle of the thing at this point. You told us to apply, we applied. We answered questions. We did everything we were supposed to do. And so why isn't that good enough at this point?
I can't agree more. Councilman Perry.
I, I, if any of this comes off as insulting, it's not meant to be. It's meant to honestly find the best person for Tiffin, and it very well might be you. It very might be Mr. Cole. My whole point in it, you know, people elected us, you know, not to worry about other people's feelings, but to do the best possible thing for Tiffin at all times. I think that, right now, is opening this back up to the public. And I think, you know, you would have a real good shot, and I would wish you the best. But again, we're, we're trying to find the best possible person to lead our city right now.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Councilmember Perry stated it very well. I was going to say the same thing. I was not trying to insult anyone. I just think we need to do our job and find the best person for the mayor's positions.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Of all the candidates, Mr. Perkins and I were the only ones that have been elected before. I've been elected many, many times overwhelmingly, every time. And so my record does still stand that I am an elected person sitting here right now, vying for that seat.
Councilman Perry.
Thank you, and I, I do agree with you on that. I, that does hold a lot of weight to me that, you know, that was one of the reasons I did vote for Zach was because he was, you know, elected by the people. I think, obviously, the charter did change. It's not, you know, we don't need, you don't need to be elected to be mayor anymore. You got to be just a, a voting citizen in the town. And I do think that does give you a, an edge or an X factor as well. You, you do have, you know, the mandate of the people. But again, you know, it, it's not about putting an elected person in there, it's about finding the, the best person. And like I said a few times already, it very well might be you. But I just think we owe it to the public to make sure that we are finding the best possible person.
Councilman Jones. You had your hand up when you did it as well.
Well, I guess my, stopping my head from shaking is what I was doing, but thank you for recognizing me. I still think we need, and yes, someone mentioned a while back, it had to have been one of the seven city council members. Well, that person was ill-informed, but we changed that with the last vote on the charter. And I don't know what it's going to hurt to open this up and get the best candidate. I just can't believe, after this meeting, if we can't decide on something, our phones are not ringing off the hook and saying, what were they thinking?
How many more candidates do you think we're going to get by reopening the position?
Three, to answer your question.
I've had a few people reach out to me, myself. I, I personally am not going to put my name in because I don't want it. But, you know, a few people said they'd be interested, and I just said, I think it's fair for the whole city to put, open this thing back up. Like I said, maybe we have someone that's enthused or wants to get back in the race. I have no idea. But I, I just think we owe it to the city to, to, to do this.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. You asked me a direct question, I gave you a direct answer. I said three. I could have said any number. I've been accused of making numbers up. I have not talked to anyone about, Councilman Jones, go to that meeting and open it up to the public. I have no names to go on. I just made up a number to answer your question, so. I just wanted to explain my number three that.
It kind of sounds like we're at an impasse. We had a motion that failed, failed the vote. And we're still under discussion on opening, opening things up, which was the motion that we downturned. So where are we staying? Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I'm allowed to make a recommendation, but, but just an idea, I guess, as, as you guys do seem to be at an impasse. Is there, is there a way that perhaps we, you know, give the deadline, say we stay with that on Sunday, to open this back up for any resumes or cover letters? If we don't receive any, are we, are we able to say the intention then would be, we would go with the, or if we don't receive any additional, then we would go with Council, Councilwoman Yanatuno and Mr. Cole, if he, if he stays to, wishes to stay in, in the, in the race? Are, are we able to say then the intention of Monday's meeting, or maybe Tuesday's meeting, if we, if we want to keep that special meeting, would be to, to vote at that time? It's just a, just a recommendation, as you guys do seem to be at an impasse.
Councilman Perry.
Thank you. Maybe, you know, maybe we shorten the timeline a little bit and don't draw it out so much. We'll keep the Sunday, 4:30 for resumes, July 18th for the members to come, kind of the same, the first timeline I had. And we'll move the vote up to the, a week from today. That way it doesn't draw it out for the candidates that we have. I just, I think it's important to open this back up.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree. I'm flexible on the dates, as long as we get it done before August the 4th. I think we're understood. President Leopard in the same, we're not arguing about the dates. I thought we were. I thought that's the way someone might have had to hang up. But.
Councilman Perry.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we reopen the mayor race back up. Accepting resumes till Sunday, July 17th at 4:30. Our first round of interviews will be July 18th at our meeting. And we will vote on a mayor a week from today. Both of those meetings will be, the Monday meeting will be at 7:00, and a week from today will be at 6:00.
Mayor.
Just as a reminder, I'm not here. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
I know. I think it's important for you to be there for the first, but that's.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Is there a second? To the motion? If there's no second, motion dies. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will make a motion that we open up the open mayor's position, asking for cover letters and resumes by Sunday, the 17th, at 4:30. Have the first round of interviews on Tuesday, the 19th, so we don't tie up our Monday meeting, that's not part of the, and vote on it a week from today, the 21st, at 6:00 PM. And 6:00 PM on Tuesday, the 19th. I'll make that motion. So to sum up, Sunday, the 17th, 4:30, Tuesday, the 19th, 6:00 PM. Thursday, the 21st, 6:00 PM.
I'll second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we reopen the mayor's position to the public. Cover letters and resumes will be due to the Clerk of City Council on Sunday, July 17th, 4:30 PM. On Tuesday, July 19th, at 6:00 PM, we will meet with the applicants and go through a Q and A period. On the 21st of July at 6:00 PM, we will meet with the applicants and go through with another Q and A session, along with a vote. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ask a question to Councilmember Wilkins. Is that 21st in your schedule to be in Tiffin?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's the only discussion I had.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I don't see where anything has changed. The timeline actually moved up, but go ahead with the vote.
I have a question.
Yes.
What if we don't get any resumes to Mayor Boyle's point? What do we, what is the, then what do we, what's our process at that point? We kind of have to have two scenarios here.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. To answer Council Wilkins' question, if I got it right, and I'm hearing, I'm going to say Council President Leopard, saying that Mr. Cole is no longer a. Council President Leopard, saying that Mr. Cole is no longer a viable candidate. So if we don't get any other cover letters and resumes by Sunday, the 14th, I guess we have one candidate and one candidate only.
If Mr. Cole submits another cover letter and resume by the deadline, he will be a candidate.
Okay. So another question. So if we've restarted this process, Councilwoman Yanantuno submits by Sunday, Mr. Cole submits by Sunday, are we doing two rounds of question and answer again? Because that's the process we're laying out right now. Because it's a new process at this point. I'm just asking the question, or at that point.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Wilkins, it sounds to me like you're doing a what-if. What if this happens? What if that happens? I don't think we should go on what-ifs.
I'm not on the what-if anymore.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm not on the what-if anymore. Both of them are gonna submit by Sunday. So then what's the process if those are the only two applicants? They've already gone through two Q&amp;As. The process we're laying out is a 19th Q&amp;A and a 21st Q&amp;A. We've already questioned, we've already done that. So is the process changed if those are the only two? We need to, we need to know what we're gonna do there? Or do we have to have them go through two more rounds?
Councilman Perry.
I believe we're allowed to cancel meetings if we don't see a necessity for them, right? Law Director?
Right. You may, but it also, could you not amend your motion to establish now what the procedure is? I think that's what the Councilmember Wilkins is saying, that this is a definite possibility. And if that occurs, then what is the process? Is it immediately then, at your next meeting on Monday, for example, that you would vote and you would elect a new mayor? Do you reserve that then for a special meeting on the 19th? I think that it's reasonable to add that to the process. And I think that's what the question ultimately is.
Councilman Perry.
I would agree. If this motion were to carry, and we only have Mr. Cole and Dawn, then we vote at our next meeting. I mean, there's no reason not to, at that point, because we've already vetted him, we've already asked him the questions that we wanted to. So I would agree to include that in the motion.
I think you need to entertain a motion to amend the motion that's on the table to add that as part of the original motion process.
Yeah, I'll choose to amend the current motion to include, if the candidates are only down to Councilmember Yanantuno and Mr. Cole, that we will, we will vote on our mayor at our next scheduled meeting on the 17th.
18th?
18th.
Okay, it has been moved and amended. Does everybody understand the timelines?
Might need a new sheet of paper.
You get a second on the motion to amend?
Yes. Is there a second? Is there a second on the motion to amend? Councilman Jones.
Could you rephrase that? Because I'm running out of paper here.
Okay.
Rephrase that for my benefit.
It has been moved and seconded to amend the motion. Now, here are the...
No, you're asking for a second on the motion to amend.
Okay, you did second, didn't you? Just now?
I don't believe so. No, no. Before I second it, I want to be clear on what I'm seconding, so...
Go ahead.
I'm asking...
You're confusing me.
I'm asking someone to...
Why don't you ask Councilmember Perry to restate his motion to amend?
Amended was if we are only down to Councilmember Yanantuno and Mr. Cole, if no one else submits a resume over the weekend until July 17th, then we will vote between them two on our next meeting on July 18th at 7:00 o'clock. But if we were to get a, an application or a cover letter, resume, and it's down to them three, then we'll go through the schedule that we have laid out.
Councilman Jones.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded...
And amended.
For the amended motion, that cover letters and resumes are to be received by the Clerk of City Council by Sunday, the 17th, at 4:30 p.m. For any applicant for the position of mayor. We will have meetings on July 17th? No, I'm sorry. July 19th, Tuesday, July 19th, at 6:00 p.m. And July 21st, at 6:00 p.m., to go through a question and answer program with the candidates. If no new candidates have submitted their cover letter and resume, the two candidates will be Councilwoman Yanantuno and Mr. Brian Cole. And we will vote on the evening of the, of July 18th, on who will succeed as mayor for the remainder of the term.
Mr. President, the motion is to amend, to add the provision that if no other, no resumes and cover letters other than the two are submitted, that you would vote on your regular, at your regular meeting on the 18th. That's what is before council right now, is to amend the original motion on that particular additional item. So you should call for a vote on the motion to amend, and then you'll move to the motion as amended for further discussion and passage, and vote on passage.
Okay. Clerk of Council, please call the roll for the motion. Not to amend, for the, for the motion to amend. Okay, do we want to go through all the times and everything again?
No, I think...
What we're voting on?
No, I got a new piece of paper.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Yanantuno?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard?
No. Motion fails by a vote of three to two.
And that's the motion...
Four votes are required.
Right. And that's the motion to amend, so now you still have a motion on the table for the process with no provision for dealing with if there are only the two submitted applicants.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkins?
No.
Councilmember Yanantuno?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard?
No. Motion fails. Okay, looks like we're at a stalemate. What do we, what do we need to do to get a mayor? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have said over and over, we do not want to judge picking the next mayor for 17 months. It's up to the five of us at this point to come up with a plan that's suitable to the five of us, or four of us. I think we need to keep discussing it and come up with ideas that we're all comfortable
Councilman Perry.
I guess my question would be to you and Dawn, is what process would you like to see going forward? Would you want, I mean, lay out timelines, you know, vote on mayor next meeting with just Dawn, with, I mean, what is your guys' thought process behind voting note, I guess, is my...
Well, my thought process now, after learning, after reading the special meeting announcement, we cannot vote tonight, correct?
Correct. Yeah, not vote on, on the election of a mayor. Correct.
So, I think we need to vote Monday. And I think that vote should be, I think there's only one candidate, because Mr. Cole was knocked out in the first round with zero votes. I think that Dawn Yanantuno is our mayor. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Vote Monday, the 18th? That's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday? Four days? Not doing our homework? Not doing our due diligence?
You've done your homework. You've done your due diligence.
There may be three or four people out here in the community that...
You can't get the motion to pass.
I'll keep bringing it up. Keep bringing it up with different motion till four of us think it's a good one.
Councilman Perry.
I'll go back to this again. I don't think you can, I mean, you can say Mr. Cole's eliminated, but he could've got votes had there not been another candidate in the pool. So, again, the process started and it ended. It's time, it's time to start a new process and, you know, figure out who the best person is. I don't see why opening it back up is not a good thing for the city. I get, it puts more pressure on, you know, the people that are here tonight and have been through it, you know, a couple times. But, again, it's not our job to worry about feelings right now. It's our job to find the best person, and that's what we need to do.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I keep coming back to transparency, transparency, transparency. Maybe I got thin-skinned, but I, if we do this on Monday, the 18th, and vote on a president, I cannot, stand corrected, mayor, I cannot believe these citizens of Tiffin are going to sit back and say, "Oh, they made the right decision this time." I just find that hard to believe. I just don't want to go through that. Being second-guessed that we shortchanged this system.
Councilman Perry.
Just want to put it out, there's no way that I will vote for a motion to vote for a new mayor on Monday. I just don't think it's right. It feels rushed. We need, we need a process in place. Probably sound like a broken record, but we need to find the best person and open it back up.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're in discussion mode. Is it, for discussion purposes, see what the other four of you think? Can we schedule another special meeting?
And... For what purpose?
Another meeting, because when my phone is ringing and ringing, and I don't even have it on me, I just want the public to know we did our homework. It sounds like we're just shortchanging this situation. That does not sit well with me, and I can't believe it's sitting well with the other 18,500 less, the two of you, to be okay with.
Councilman Perry.
It feels that, you know, if nobody is going to change their mind on this, then maybe we do have to wait until the Republican or Democratic parties put somebody in, and then there's a tie, and then the, I believe the president pro tem breaks any tie at that point, right, or no?
President pro tem votes now.
We don't have a council president.
There is no council president.
So, yeah. Just gets trickier and trickier here.
Sorry.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Can I just ask the question, and I guess I would direct this to Law Director? Can we have clarification? Because I think there's still disconnect on whether Mr. Cole is still in the, in the race or not. So, as President Leopard talked about, voting for, voting on Monday, and there's only one person, is that accurate? And I'm not trying to challenge you, I'm just trying to get clarity, because it seems like some people are on the understanding that Mr. Cole is still in the running, and others feel that it's just Councilmember Yanantuno.
Yeah, I guess my comments are that you had an established process that started and really finished, and, in my view, then you need to establish a new process. And you have two candidates that submitted their applications. They seem to be still interested, so I think they are both still viable. I don't think that you can now exclude one automatically, because I think the process has, has ended, and you're really moving forward. And both are similarly situated as interested applicants. So I think, hopefully, that addresses at least the way that I have perceived, based on the process that you had established.
Thank you.
Question, question to the council members. Say we get zero applications from the public, and we're not happy with that, do we extend it another week, hoping that maybe one or two other people apply? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, we do not. If we get no additional cover letters, resumes, they got their chance. I just want to give the public a chance to be part of this.
We gave them the chance once.
I think we should give them a second chance.
We had four candidates.
Well, let's get four more.
There's no guarantee you're gonna get any. Councilman Perry.
There's no guarantee we're gonna get any the first time we did it. And I don't, we didn't sit here thinking about, what if we don't get any? I think we just open it up, and let's cross bridges when we get to them. If we don't get any, then we'll come up with another plan on Monday night. But let's just give it till Monday to see what, you know, comes about. And I would be very interested just to see what the acting mayor opinion is on what she thinks going forward, recommendation, I guess, for council. Would you think it'd be wise to, you know, go through with this process, open it back up, or stick with the two we got, or what?
In my opinion, I, I do, I do tend to agree of, I'm not following as to what we would lose. And that's when it kind of went back to, almost like my, my recommendation before. I see it as more of a compromise of what you guys are discussing. If there's no other applications, great. Not great, but okay. Then we can vote, we can say the intention then is to vote Monday, 7:18, or 7:19, if we want to schedule a special meeting. But if we do have other applications, let's take a look at those and follow a process in order to give that opportunity. I totally understand, or, excuse me, President Leopard, that we've given that opportunity before, but in an effort to continue to achieve transparency, and that the fact that the process started and ended, and we're starting it again, I just think it would be fair to the public to at least give them a chance. And, again, I don't think that we're saying, you know, two weeks that they have to submit resumes, but I just think that it would be fair to reopen it, and with the caveat, if there's no additional applications, then you would vote with the two that you have currently.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. President Leopard explained it well, and he explained that Brian Cole is no longer a candidate in this because he was dropped off. So that leaves one candidate in my mind, Councilmember Yanantuno. Not two. So I'm confusing myself, maybe, but is there one, or is there two?
The Law Director just stated that he, he feels that there are two candidates. Mr. Cole and Councilwoman Yanantuno. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be the last person in this room to challenge what Director of Law Howard said, but I will challenge a president. Did you not say earlier in the meeting that Mr. Cole was not a candidate because he dropped off by getting the lowest number of votes?
That's what I said, and I was corrected by the Director of Law.
Where was I when you were corrected by the Director of Law? I just...
Just happened about three minutes ago.
I had, I had asked for that clarification, because it seemed like there was a disconnect of what everybody was under the impression of. So I wanted to be aligned on who the candidates were currently, and he gave that response.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll still challenge you, Mr. President, and not the Director of Law. If Mr. Cole was dropped off because he got the lowest number of votes, then he is no longer a candidate in... longer a candidate, in my opinion. Correct me for the third time if I'm wrong.
Director of Law?
Yeah. Counsel, you can establish the process that you want, and you should cooperate and try to work together to come up with something. I think the, the worst thing you can do is to come out of this meeting with, you know, no consensus, no process. I think it, it shows unfortunately a kind of a dysfunction that is not helpful to the community. But I guess I will say that, that you established a process before, it did not work. And those were some, you know, difficult circumstances. We're all living with it. We're all dealing with, you know, what happened and mistakes or concerns that people have. And we all are honest people, and we recognize that, you know, unfortunately, it didn't happen in the best interest of the community. And you have to in some ways start over. But you do have two candidates that have worked through the process that you had established. And under the circumstances, I think they are both still viable candidates for you to consider. So that's why I, I said that, you know, the process started and it's finished, but you still have two viable candidates that have presented themselves and seem to be very interested in serving as mayor. And there's no reason why you couldn't go ahead and, and schedule an election if that's what you choose to do. Or you could open it up to allow others. The charter does, you know, suggest that that's what the voters wanted. They wanted anyone in the city. But you have been through, you know, a request for resumes, and these are two viable candidates that have presented themselves.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Director of Law Howard just helped me out here at the end of his statement just then. He said the citizens in Tiffin voted on any registered voter in the city of Tiffin. I think that's what we need to give them.
Okay. Let me ask, how do you, how do you, how are you going to go about educating the entire city before Sunday evening at 4:30 PM that the position is open?
Asking me?
Yes.
People watching on channel, somebody said 1021? People watching on, I don't know what Mr. Fretz's distribution is?
Do you want an article in the newspaper?
Haven't you asked someone like Director of Communications and constituency, whatever that big word is? Put that out tomorrow? Run down the newspaper tonight, I'll go down there and submit something yet tonight, and hit the newspaper tomorrow or Saturday, the special edition?
We have no Sunday print.
But we have Saturday.
You'll, you'll have Saturday that you can get it in. Pardon?
There's no guarantee.
Yeah, there's no guarantee. There you go. Councilman Perry?
If we were to extend the timeline of collecting resumes, would that change your mind then to vote to reopen it back up?
Probably not, because, you know, I think that we've already vetted, we, we've been through the process, and I think that we have one, in my opinion, we have one candidate left. Councilman Perry?
Another question. I mean, what if, you know, Zach Perkins would have taken the oath and two months resigned? Would we still only consider Dawn and Mr. Cole, or will we open it up to the whole city? I mean, in my mind, when we selected somebody, we, that completed our process. So this is determining another process, and that has to be opening it back up to the public.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I could ask the Clerk of Courts to rewind the tape for, but I just heard you say, President Leopard, that in your...
You asked my opinion, I gave you my opinion.
You said there was one candidate.
I said my opinion is one candidate. The Law Director did correct me and say that we have two viable candidates. You asked in my opinion, and I gave you my opinion, my opinion is one candidate.
Okay, thank you. Can I share my opinion with you?
Please.
My opinion is we have one candidate currently.
So, would you like, well, we can't vote on that candidate tonight anyway. Councilman Jones?
Thank you. We're down to one candidate. Citizens of Tiffin expect us to be open, transparent, and get the best person, best registered person in Tiffin with the qualifications to be the next mayor. I think we need to go through the process and find out who that person is.
Any further comments? If not, I'm very close to adjourning this meeting and we'll take up the subject Monday. Is there any other business to come before this council? If not, I declare this meeting closed.